Trying to do a little, play a little catch up here at the city of Olivia. To firm up some of our intentions on how we want to handle cannabis in the community moving forward. And we have Pam with us virtually. She's walked a lot of cities, a lot of municipalities through this process. And she has just a really wide worldview on this topic. So she'll, she'll help us through our decision making here. It looks like we are kind of looking at four major decisions to consider tonight. One of them is a potential interim ordinance for zoning regulations and numbers of licenses. The second one would have to do with public use of cannabis. And the third one is if the city is interested in having a municipal dispensary. Actually, that might be about it. We need to consider perhaps a moratorium on new businesses as well if we need to try and buy ourselves some time. So Pam, what are you seeing out there that you could recommend as, as best practices right now?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you sound wonderful.
Okay, thanks for tolerating me. This is my vacation time. I had a conference. I'm out in Palm Springs. So we're going to try on my end. I had prepared a PowerPoint to help walk through some of these issues. So we're going to, on my end, try to pull that up. So if you want to just give me a quick minute to see if we can pull that up for you to be able to use. Otherwise, we can walk it through if we need to. Here we go. Let's see if I can share my screen. All right, can we see it?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, so this is just a quick overview of the different things to think about with respect to the recent changes in Minnesota. So as you all have probably heard, there has been an incredible amount of legislative changes in the last session related to not only the lower level products that were illegal the year before, but in addition to that, the higher level cannabis products under the, under the state of Minnesota and how they define that. So I think that if I can do this from, let's see if I can do the slideshow from the beginning. There we go. Do, can you see it bigger now?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I put this slide in generally for my cities to be able to see the differences or the lack thereof between hemp and marijuana. So hemp on the left-hand side is that lower level product that was available for sale in the edible format a couple sessions ago. And marijuana is on the right-hand side, which is what the, our legislature is calling the higher level products or the cannabis products. And the reason for this is not necessarily for us to all become scientists, but just for you all to see. And I don't know if the chief's there. I didn't see him necessarily.
Both chiefs, Pam are here.
Oh, great. That's awesome. So I, I just put this slide up here so you can all see how hard it is for enforcement purposes to really tell the differences between the two. And so the, the main differences are the height that it can grow, the climate that it can grow in, which isn't necessarily going to be relevant for those doing enforcement. And the biggest difference is the amount of that mind altering substance, that THC product that, that is in each of these different byproducts from these plants. So hemp contains point three percent or less of that THC and marijuana is above that. The other thing to keep in mind that's causing a lot of, I don't want to, maybe issues would be the right word, but just confusion for many cities, cities are, we serve in a lot of roles. We're not only regulators, we not only set up land use, but we're also employers. So we're seeing a lot of changes with respect to that confusion between marijuana and hemp. Marijuana from an employer's perspective, which we really aren't going to talk too much about tonight, is still an illegal substance under the federal law and is now not illegal under state law. So, so there's a lot of different things that this new legislation has brought to, for, for us to all think about. So just under the definitions, the reason why this matters, so that lower potency hemp product, that's a new definition under our new statute, and it really is intended to be eaten or drank. So those edible cannabinoids is what it is aimed at. Before this new legislation went into effect, under our former statute, which is 15172, it is defined in a different manner. Again, still intended to be eaten or consumed, but just really not as well defined as it is in our most recent session. So you can see that again is going to be very confusing for people as they transition over. And this 151.72, which is on the books now, is going to be going away March 1st, 2025. So that is the reason why if there's anybody in our city who is selling the lower level potency hemp products, they need to have registered by yesterday. So October 1st, 2023 was the deadline so that this Office of Cannabis Management will be able to know who's out there selling already. So that's the other thing to think about is we as a city aren't going to be able to license. We will have to register, but we won't be able to license any of these products, the retail sale of any of these products. Cause there is a state agency that's currently being set up called the Office of Cannabis Management. It is officially set up. There's not a commissioner yet. There was a commissioner appointed for 24 hours and that person resigned. And there now the governor is looking again. So again, not trying to get into the two, and I wanted to say the weeds, but that would be a bad joke. And I think I've been to a million presentations who they said, I don't want to get into the weeds. Sorry for the pun, but I don't want to get too detailed because it doesn't matter. But I want the council to take away that these products are, look the same. You use them similarly. And so for an enforcement perspective, when the council's thinking about what council wants to do that's right for the city of Olivia, really having that input from the chief is going to be useful as far as what's going to be easiest for them to be able to enforce. So those higher levels, again, I'm just going to skip by this one because I kind of covered it. It just, the big thing about the cannabis product, which is that higher level marijuana type product is it is consumable in many formats other than the lower level product, which is really intended to be more edible format. So the background on selling and manufacturing, this act took effect July 1st, 2023. Again, as I mentioned, that immediately created the Office of Cannabis Management. They are going to be the licensing agency for all products. There are 16 different types of licenses that the Office of Cannabis Management will be issuing. And many of them are retail focused, but there's also manufacturing. There's also distribution. There's also wholesaling. So they are licensing all the different types of businesses, commercial businesses that our community might see popping up as far as with respect to all levels of these products, lower level and the higher level and the medical. So they're going to cover all of it. We are going to, as a city, have very little ability to do anything other than register them. So we have to register, but the state will license. So think about alcohol. They're going to preempt in a similar fashion where they're going to be licensing all of these different types of commercial businesses. Now, having said that, we are allowed to do some zoning, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And we're going to get some, eventually some guidance from this Office of Cannabis Management. They have promised in the actual language of the statute itself to do a model ordinance for local jurisdictions to be able to have as a guide. And they're intending to work with the local jurisdictions. There's also the ability, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that there's going to be the ability for local jurisdictions to limit the number of licenses for retail businesses for, based on population. The size of our city is going to be that you would be in that one license parameter. That doesn't mean you have to do that. Your city, if you want to have it open for more, you can have it open for more. But if you have a desire to have a limitation on number, then you can have, you can restrict it down to one. There's also a provision in the state statute that allows cities to not have to provide any licenses, but only if the county has already provided based on population enough licenses, which is a little bit confusing. The statute says you can't prohibit these, you can't prohibit. But if your county already has the number of licenses allowed for that type of population, you can in that instance. But then you're turning everything over to the county, just so you know. So it does get a little confusing. So, so many of my cities have enacted a moratorium. Just to be clear, I am very much a believer. I'm not a policymaker. So you all know what's best for the community. I will tell you the pros and cons of a moratorium. The pros for many cities is to wait and see what in the heck the Office of Cannabis Management is going to do. So we have to get a commissioner appointed who sticks around for more than 24 hours. And then they're going to rule make. And so then what that rule making will be specific to their whole licensing process. And as part of that, they will be doing their guidance as far as a model ordinance for local communities to have. So there are many cities who see that as a benefit to being able to study what's right for, for our city and see what would work. And to really dig into what do we want that to look like for the city of Olivia? How many lower level businesses are there? How many higher level businesses can the city really accommodate? You know, you have a lot of agriculture. Is what's the likelihood of manufacturing and distribution and all of those things to think about and consider? So some, under this legislation that got passed, cities may put on a pause, but just on that retail, the establishment of those retail businesses, those for up to January 1st, 2025. So that gives the cities a chance to see what the Office of Cannabis Management is going to come out with and whether that study and whether it's right for our local community. Some cities are not putting that moratorium in place. Some cities are saying, you know what? They, they aren't licensing right now anyway. And so we're just going to wait and see what, what happens and what, what happens with that licensing structure. The, the only argument against that is you don't know when that's going to happen. And so then your council meetings take time. So then do, where you have some kind of licensing that comes out and then you have a couple council meetings before you figure out what's going to work for Olivia. And then you have a certain number of retail businesses pop up and they have an existing right then to continue businesses and you didn't maybe want that many. So there's just some things to think about with that. Yeah, Mayor.
Just to pause and clarify a little bit. So when we're talking moratorium, right now we're specifically discussing the new cannabis? The new cannabis products? We're not talking about the old hemp derived products? Okay.
No. So the new, the new law doesn't give cities the authority to put a pause on those lower level products. The, the specific moratorium language is specific to cannabis products, which is the higher level. Now I have had some cities who didn't put a moratorium in place before, which I don't think Olivia did either, if it's my understanding. So we have used another part of the state statutes, which is just the interim ordinance for 62 statute in general to put a pause on all of the products at this moment. But it's my understanding there's some retailers who are already selling in the city of Olivia. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're selling.
You're right. And so then are you going to put a pause on the lower level product too when we as a city are already selling it?
No.
No.
So.
I assume no.
No.
That probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense, right? So the, so some cities, some of my cities have, but that's because they didn't have a moratorium under 462 in place. And so they are putting it on everything, but then they can only do that for a year as opposed to January 1st, 2025. Whereas under the actual state, new state law, you can pause those higher level product retail sales. Again, it's only the retail sales, commercial retail sales until January 1st, 2025. I want to just take a pause and note that people can use and grow at home starting August, you know, August 1st. So that, that pause does not go on that at all. Okay? So here's a lot of what I talked about. So it's in the materials if you wanted to dig into that further as far as that licensing structure. And then just the zoning, the, the state statute has said, yes, cities may reasonably zone. We don't know what reasonably zoning means. We, again, that's another good reason to have a pause on those retail businesses because you can figure out what is reasonable zoning. The, we got a little bit of a highlight from the state when in the language of the statute, it says a certain distance, a thousand feet from schools, 500 feet from daycares or residential treatment facilities, or an attraction with a public park that is regularly used by minors. So that's probably what you'll be seeing cities doing a lot of with their zoning is just putting a distance restrictions on different types of, of other businesses. Again, some cities are saying, well, we kind of want to wait and see. So we're putting that moratorium in place because we, what they want to avoid is having a cannabis product retail business set up shop anywhere and then find out later. They don't want it to be within a certain distance of a school. But then that existing business has what's called a, a right, like a, similar to what for a land use, illegal non-conforming use. So, you know, just they've been operational. They might have a right to be able to continue that business and we'd have some due process concerns with that. So that's another reason why some cities are putting a pause on, just to see what the state's going to say with respect to recommendations for zoning. So then that gets us to use. And so use is something that is not going to be regulated by the, the law. It's legal beginning August 1st, individuals, you have to be 21 or older to be used any of these products in any format, with the exception of you can't use it where there's the Clean Air Act states that you can't use it. So that's mostly indoors, that's all indoor spaces. And then also it's prohibited to be used around, near a minor. Well, what does that mean? Right? And so the, the statute does allow local jurisdictions to put in place an ordinance that regulates use within their jurisdiction. So the state's not doing it, but the state says, well, okay, for this specific thing for with respect to use, cities, you can decide in your city in public spaces where you can limit the use of that. They've, they've rolled out exceptions. You can't prohibit it from a private residence, the, what they call the curtilage, which is a fun little word to say, curtilage of the private residence. You can't prohibit it from an event that the Office of Cannabis Management has approved a permit for cannabis use at. So those are the exceptions to where we can regulate the use. But otherwise, generally you can regulate in public places.
Well, this Office of Cannabis Management can declare that our public spaces are open for a, for a smoking event?
So they have permits for cannabis events. So not necessarily smoking, but it can be smoking of that product. It is not, if we pass or again, if we put a pause and then adopt an ordinance that allows, that, that puts parameters around where these events can be. Then I, it's my belief, and this is, you actually raised a really good point, Mayor, because there are people who are discussing this right now. But it's my belief that we can publicly, we can regulate the public spaces. So if we say, you know what, none of these events either in our public spaces, then what happens is whenever they get a request for a license, so whether that's a retail license, whether it's a manufacturer's license, whether it's a special event license, they send it to the city. The city then checks the boxes of, yep, it meets our zoning. Yeah, yes, it meets our, their background check, that kind of thing. Cause you know, the city is in charge of doing all of the enforcement and the background checking. So one thing I believe we can put in our ordinance is we don't, we're not going to host any of these events in our public spaces. So then we would put on their form, no, they can't have it at that location because it's in a public space.
Does that seem to differ from our liquor policy where we kind of go through, uh, through an application process to have like the street dance or something downtown?
Right, that's what I was thinking. It's the same as a street dance. It would be just with THC.
So we would just have to set up just so we can kind of give the nod to such a.
Maybe have a barrier requirement like the alcohol does.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a really good point.
Police, I don't know.
Never would have thought of it.
The other part of this is that we got it.
Well, somebody might do that. I mean, maybe nobody in this room smokes weed, but people do smoke weed. And these are all things they might be doing and it is legal whether you like it or not. So these are good things we need to think about.
For sure.
So that raises another good point is I'm also encouraging my cities whenever they, you know, the first step is deciding what you want to do now. And then based on what the council wants to do now, we should then take that information and review the rest of the ordinances and align them up. So let's say that you say, well, we want public use of these intoxicating products to be the same as what we have for our alcohol policy, right? So then we could go and amend your alcohol, alcohol, use of alcohol in public spaces to reflect that to be both alcohol and cannabis and/or cannabis and THC. So I mean, those, those are all additional decisions down the road that build on what the council wants to do initially with these cannabis and potentially lower level products. So just as a reminder, people can, you know, where are people getting these products now? If they can use it, but they're not yet licensed, where in the heck are they getting the products? Well, you can grow at home. And I joke that it really technically wasn't legal to grow at home until July 1st. So if people are saying that they're getting it from their home products that they've grown at home, they must have some really great miracle grow, right? To have the poor flowering already. But there's Indian reservations that are currently selling. And then they're bringing, you know, people are bringing it in from out of state too. So, so it is confusing. So what do we need to, as a council, talk about and think about? And I prepared a memo, you know, it's, I apologize for it being lengthy. I told Elizabeth I tried to reduce it down as much as I can. She asked for one page.
I tried.
Three pages.
I tried.
Clearly, clearly I blew through that. But it does, I did want to take a moment to highlight some of the things to really be thinking about. And one of them is, and I know that the council has, has expressed potentially some interest. You, there can be a city dispensary for, for this types of products. But I think that the, the discussion for tonight that the council should really focus on is when do you want to have a moratorium? Right now, do you want to put a pause on that so you have a little bit of time to find out what in the heck the Office of Cannabis Management is going to do and say and how they're going to regulate? And then that will give you time also, that will give us time also to really look at, you know, our space, where the parks are, where the schools are, where commercial daycares are, if any, and where, where available spaces for some retail type space? And do we need to put some of those distance restrictions on? Do, do you, so we can have the discussions in the future, do you want to limit it to just one? If it is just one and you're interested in a municipal dispensary, is that one or two? Because we can't guarantee that the one would be us because we'd have to apply just like everybody else to the Office of Cannabis Management. And they have different criteria that they put on the application, including they wait the applications differently for some, from some DEI perspectives. I don't know the details. I don't think they do yet because they haven't done their rulemaking yet. So that's the first thing to think of. Do you want to get moratorium or not on these retail sales for the higher level cannabis products? Two, do you want to restrict public use? And if you do, then what does that look like for the city of Olivia? Is that just parks? Is it any space, you know, which would include sidewalks and streets and all of that? Is it for all products, which is really hard to enforce because they all look the same? Or is it just smoking, which a lot of cities are, are going towards because that's easier to, to enforce? And then what is the county doing? It's my, I, I try to keep on top of all the counties. I meant to look today for, again, for Lyon, but I don't think Lyon County's done anything yet as far as passing an ordinance. There are some counties that are passing ordinances under their public health powers for smoking and doing different types of prohibitions. So then you have that layered of jurisdiction because counties really are supposed to preempt cities as far as from that public health space. And so what would that mean? Well, if there's a sheriff's deputy in town, they see someone smoking, then they could have jurisdiction to, to have, have that citation. There are some counties who are choosing not to do that, who are just doing it under their regular powers. And so then they really jurisdictionally wouldn't have that preemptive power. So really kind of knowing what the county is doing too is helpful. It's helpful for residents because where, if you, if you step, you know, on the other side of the county line for the city, the city county line, I can smoke here, I can't smoke there, you know, it gets, it gets confusing. So these are really the, the things to think about. And then depending on what you decide for that, we analyze the other code sections and make recommendations of things that you may want to consider amending to a lineup with, with your thinkings with respect to these intoxicating products. So with that, I will stop talking.
Perfect timing.
Okay.
Do we, uh, do we just want to add cannabis to our discussion items or, or do we want to tackle it now?
We're not going to take any action tonight, so might as well just talk about it now.
Okay. Can you?
County decided anything?
They have a moratorium going.
They have a moratorium on sales, but that, it just is outside of city limits. It's the only thing they can do about.
Yeah, I don't think they put anything on use yet, right?
I don't think so either.
I saw something about public use through the county.
I think they might've done like the whole, we think of it like smoking, don't do it on county parks, stuff like that. But I don't remember. Probably wasn't listening to that meeting close enough.
So I think the first bullet point that.
Cannabis use in public.
Okay. I think the first bullet point that Pam had up there as a priority was the moratorium. So, so I, you know, I'm a free market guy by heart, but I also do understand the potential benefit of having a municipal dispensary. And so I think perhaps a moratorium on the retail level makes sense personally.
I don't think a moratorium has any bearing on whether we have a municipal one or not.
It has a bearing on whether our municipal dispensary is set up like our municipal liquor store as being the only business in town that can.
That's only if we choose to restrict it to one. We can have as many as we want.
Correct.
I'm a hundred percent not in favor of limiting any of it.
Okay.
So.
My opinion would be to leave it open or don't put a moratorium on it. See where the cards lay and just restrict it to our business and industrial zoning areas. Like keep it out of, to the extent possible, keep it out of residential areas. But we can't complain about our downtown dying and then start shutting doors.
You already can't have it in residential areas according to the, the way the law is written. So that's protected. I think there should be some offset away from schools. I don't know about daycares. That's usually, I don't know. I haven't thought that one through.
I don't know how we could do that, because the way our town is, there are parks everywhere. There are churches everywhere. We would get rid of our entire business district if we said, yeah, can't do it within, if you did it within three hundred feet of either of those, you would get rid of the entirety of our downtown.
I was thinking just the school.
Do you already have ordinances in the books for alcohol?
Yeah, and smoking on the parks and stuff.
There are restrictions as far as how close it can be to a school and all that, right? So could they be, you know, follow those guidelines that you already have in place?
If we keep them out of those areas, if we keep them to our business-owned areas, it's going to be far enough away from the school.
We're talking about businesses not consuming it right now.
Yeah, because it's all zone residential by the school, so that's already ipso facto taken care of.
Yeah, there's no zoning, commercial zoning near the school anyway.
Pamela, did you say the state already has some of those?
Um, has some of what?
Uh, staying away so many feet from the parks and-
Oh, that was suggestions.
Oh, suggestions.
They were saying, well, this type of stuff would be reasonable.
If you go a thousand feet, well, you-
That's all-
That's all downtown is gone, so.
If you did a hundred feet, that's a lot of downtown, just because-
From, from the park or from the churches, or what are you saying?
Both. I mean-
But there is a park downtown.
There is a park downtown, and there is a church right next to downtown.
It doesn't have any youth recreation equipment at this time. But if a business did put their, did plant there-
With the exception of Dowling Park?
Well, I mean-
I don't think we should look at restricting anything right now, because there's no rules or anything remotely resembling-
They're not issuing licenses.
They're not issuing licenses, they're not doing any, I, I honestly don't know why we're even meeting about this right now, because honestly, we're way ahead of it.
I, I agree with the-
Do you rather be behind?
No, and there's no way we're going to be behind. We got two, almost two full years before it even becomes legal to sell.
So, yeah, in, in my opinion, what's going to end up hap, given that hopefully it ends up downtown or somewhere along our two twelve corridor, that is the most likely place you're going to set up a business in town somewhere. That being said, it kind of gets rid of most of the dip, and where we have our parks and stuff, it gets rid of the whole, we can't really put distance restrictions on this stuff around things. And really, if someone's going to come open up a dispensary and the state of Minnesota starts issuing rules, that's them taking the risk on it, not us. Like, the use of these types of products are going to be around us no matter what, just because that's the world? So why handcuff ourselves to a rule? Or why handicap ourselves in that way? Like, if that, if we can somehow, again, have a thriving marijuana business, or have eight dispensaries in town, that probably wouldn't be a net negative to us. It would probably be, it'd be debatable if it's a net negative to maybe the state if we became the hub of it. But the products are going to be here anyways. Like, it's, it'd be like trying to say, yeah, we're not selling booze in Olivia anymore. Like, it's just going to be there.
Can you just put in there that it has to be in a retail storefront, cannot be operated out of a residential home?
That's already-
That's part of the zoning.
Yeah.
You have electricians, hairdressers, and cabinet makers working out of their garages right now.
Right.
Yeah, anything zone residential, you can't have-
It'd have to be, have to be in the B one or B three zones.
Yeah.
Or I one, I suppose, or I two, huh?
But isn't there residential in the B one though?
There's a lot of residential in there, because that's an old, that's an old map too, I think, by the looks of it. No, maybe not.
Twenty fifteen?
Yeah. Yeah, it's as current as anything, probably. But, I mean, if that's how we're set up, then, I don't know, or maybe can we put restrictions on it can't be out of a homesteaded property or something like that, or, I'd be good with something like that. I just, I don't want to absolutely shut down the idea that we're going to have a new business pop up in town when we desperately need it.
Right, no, I, I agree, but I also agree that just keep it out of the homes, you know?
That's already, Pamela, isn't that already part of the law?
Industrial.
No, yeah, that's right.
Those are homes.
Pam? Pam?
Yeah.
Is it, you can't have any dispensaries in residentially zoned areas?
So, um, you, you, you can have your private growth, of course, just so we get that all clear.
But retail.
Um, yeah, but the retail is going to be based on the city zoning, so we can pull up, um, your zoning code, and I'd have to look at it. Um, that's something I can look into as far as residential, what's conditional or permitted uses in your, your residential zones. Um, and if it's not in there, you can put a limitation that, um, you know, no cannabis use in your, in, in residential zones.
Well, I would be more in favor then of looking at our zoning and making sure that we have that appropriate, because it looks to me like it covers a pretty decent section of residential houses. So maybe we need to just tighten up our zoning a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Because it wasn't that long ago that we allowed that. Jasmine, were you here for that? That we pulled that down, because somebody wanted zoning to be pushed back, to be industrial, but the tracks? We just passed to allow that area to be an industrial area.
What, the B one?
Since I've been here, so.
I two, I think she's talking.
So, yeah, so you have, over, let's see.
Well, we own most of I two, so what's the difference?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think, I think Monica was saying that I two is across the street from her house. There's resident, there's-
Is it, I don't know where, which one it is on the, I can't see.
I two is the purple one.
But over by Ninth Street.
We restrict it more to say not, not to be sold out of a residential-
Dwelling?
Or a homestead at home.
Well, how about this? Why, so this is good direction for me. And by the way, I think Elizabeth texted me, I think I said Lyon County. Sorry, did I say Lyon County?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry. I know you're in Renville County. I, last time I had this discussion was with Marshall. They are in Lyon County, so my apologies for, um, getting that wrong. But, um, this is all good information, and how about for the, we come back with what your residential zones, zoning says, instead of me trying to look it up on the fly, and we can just tighten that up to make sure. I noticed that in your zoning code, there's some home occupation, um, that's allowed. But if, you know, obviously cannabis isn't going to be listed in that list already, um, so that it still wouldn't be allowed under that. It's very likely that it's not allowed right now in your residential district, just based on how your zoning, what I, how I know zoning is generally written. But we can check it and make sure, and if it is, we can address it with an amendment. How's that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Perfect.
Okay. Um, so the other question then is what about just using?
I know we talked about it pretty briefly about a couple of months ago, and we wanted to treat it like smoking cigarettes and drinking beer.
Okay.
Yep, so we've got ordinances in place that already cover that.
Uh, we think they cover it.
Yeah, I think they, they need to be reviewed, obviously.
We can review them.
Make sure.
So that's the easy way to do it. Generally, we just have to read, make sure if there's not a definition, or if there is a definition, just to redefine, uh, what smoking includes.
Mm-hmm. And I think that's what we attempted to do.
Okay.
Whether we did it right or not.
Yeah, we did review it that day.
Yeah.
In a meeting.
Were there any changes made?
No, it didn't, it didn't, didn't need to be changed.
Okay, okay. So I'll just take a look at, um, take a look at that, and if we need to tighten that up, we'll do that.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
So the goal is, as I'm looking at it, is just no, no smoking? So you don't care if people are eating gummies or-
I don't know how you didn't force it.
What's that?
Well, there, there's no reasonable way to enforce that, so.
Right, right. Okay.
You don't want them having the gummies at the park.
How are you gonna-
Kick down every person and have them empty their pockets?
Well, right, but if you just say it's not allowed, it might detour, detour some people from doing it. If, if you're allowing gummies at the park, you're literally allowing gummies at the park.
We already don't allow booze at the park.
Right, but you're not making anything against gummies, so therefore you're allowing it. If you're saying no to smoking weed and not no to having gummies or the drink, that's not alcohol, that's THC. So they can bring that to the park, but they can't bring a pipe.
Previously.
I think, I think that's okay, because it's the second part of the-
I don't think that's okay, absolutely not.
Yeah, to me, it's-
I, I think, I think, let's just clarify for a second, right? So two months ago, we said we wanted to treat this like smoking cigarettes and drinking beer, right?
Right, but all of it, not just smoking it.
Right, that's the drinking beer part, right? Yep. Consuming?
Yes, well, yeah, but consuming anything, gummies, drinks, smoking it, all of it.
Yeah, that's-
Falls under that.
Yep, absolutely. That's what we decided a couple of months ago.
Okay.
Just put cannabis use and have a blanket.
Yeah.
I don't think you can enforce that.
Good.
We can say it.
Well, right, I, I understand that, but just, I'll put it out there so people know they can't do it.
Okay. Very good. It's a informational thing. All right, got it. Wonderful.
Thank you. We will look at all of those zoning and ordinances and codes and make sure that they're tightened up. I know we've gone ten minutes over the work session. Sorry, everybody. Thanks for everybody joining us.
I'll rise, please, for the pledge.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We'll, uh, call the meeting to order by doing a roll call, determining a quorum. Councilor Baumgartner, Ferguson, Paternas, Ebers.
Here.
I'm here. We have a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order at six twelve, six eleven, and thirty seconds. All right. Um, right now is, uh, time for the public forum, so if anybody from the public wishes to address the council, uh, now is the time to do so. Please state your name and address for the, um, public record.
We have a virtual submission?
Oh, very good.
A little bit hard to hear, so we turn this over.
Oh, it's the chicken farmers.
Hi there. Sorry we couldn't make it, but we're just going to make a video to play, so that way we can get our opinion out there.
Yeah, so the reason that we want chickens is mostly for our egg classes. We have food chemistry and animal science are like one of two major ones that we want them for. So for food chemistry is learning about the chemical reactions that happen when you bake things, and eggs are a big part of that process. So to have like the difference between fresh eggs and store-bought eggs, where you're dealing with food chemistry, could be really beneficial to our students. And then for animal science, a large part of that is, you know, the anatomy of the chicken, and to have an actual animal that you can see and visualize is a lot more effective for learning about the anatomy of the chicken. And then also, there's a lot of experiments you can do with eggs and learning about the anatomy of eggs and how that all works. So to have real eggs that you like, um, get from your chickens and be able to experiment with that would be really beneficial.
Our Intro to Egg program and our FFA would both split chores equally. To Intro to Egg would, and FFA would learn about the daily chore process and how to tend for animals, and that chickens are a great starter animal for, because they're small, easy to take care of, and don't take up a lot of space nor food. Um, our FFA program would also be able to select people that could tend them over the summer, which they would receive summer credit for, and it would, it would be like a class where they would receive grade and credit. And then our FFA could also use it for judging, for practice judging of animals, including chickens, and then slowly working throughout the other ones. But it'd be a great hands-on experience to learn from.
And then we'd also be using our hay and everything else as fertilizer for our own garden at the school. And then if anybody else would like to use some of the fertilization and everything, we'd be able to use that in the community gardens or anywhere else.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could they say about any?
A hundred percent, yes.
Uh, they did not. So, uh, if you'd like to explore this option, we're happy, uh, to have it referred to the Planning Commission. That would be the appropriate home for more information, more research, things like that. Um, but that's up to you as a council to decide on.
Do you have any idea if they'd be kept inside?
Uh, we'd have to discuss coops and where they would be located and things like that, yeah.
My only concern is avian influenza and backyard flocks and spreading that around.
That's a very real concern.
Be better with it.
Yeah, okay. Would you like to refer this to the Planning Commission then? Yeah?
Should we put it into a discussion item on the agenda?
Unless you think there's more discussion to be made.
We can come back after the Planning Commission.
Okay. Anybody else from the public, uh, have anything to address the council about? All right, seeing none, we'll, uh, just move forward with the, with the regular meeting here with, uh, an approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Baumgartner to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Agenda's been approved. Have a couple proclamations in front of us. October is Breast Ca, Breast Cancer Awareness Week. Uh, just want to, uh, bring attention to this devastating illness that affects a large portion of our population and, and, and a lot of our neighbors. So just want to raise awareness here and remind anybody susceptible to this disease to, uh, go through the process of getting it checked out. It's also, uh, coming up on National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day. That's coming up on October fifteenth. Uh, we just want to recognize everybody who's, um, dealt with that loss. I just want you to know, uh, if you need support, that is available. There is an organization called Infants Remembered in Silence. Um, they have services that can help you through your situation as well. I'll reorganize myself. Give me a second. Okay. Well, call for, uh, we have our consent agenda in front of us here. We've had that for a number of days now. Call for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Uh, motion's been made by Ebers. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Baumgartner to approve the, uh, consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Consent agenda carries. Uh, moving down to discussion items, uh, we have a public hearing here for the proposed assessments of delinquent utility accounts to property taxes. So right now, we'll temporarily recess the meeting and open up a public hearing regarding these proposed assessments of delinquent utility accounts to property taxes. So if anybody from the public wishes to address the council regarding delinquent utility accounts, now is the time. Not seeing any movement in here or out there, uh, so we can receive some staff reports at this time?
Um, I think that's staff reports for this agenda item. Um, so just as a idea about the assessment process, so in September, we, um, sent letters to the property owners about this issue. We also posted two notices of the public hearing for two weeks straight. Um, so this is where they have the opportunity to come and talk about delinquent accounts if need be. Um, next council meeting, we will provide a resolution, um, for the council to certify unpaid accounts. There's also a five dollar administrative fee that's added to those remaining balances, because when we sent them to the county, that is their processing fee. Um, and in November, we will send them to the county for certification.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any public comment out there? Hearing none, we're going to close the, uh, public hearing, reopen the regular meeting, and move right along to discussion item B, the first or reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash five, amending section thirty dot oh seven relating to writing requirements and section thirty dot ten relating to ordinances. So, uh, in the past, we've gone through, um, these processes of ordinances, and they've been-
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
Um, was there a motion to set the public hearing? Did I miss that?
I don't know if anybody moved.
No, there was not.
Sorry. Thank you, Pam.
Yep.
At this point, I'll call for a motion to set the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by Ferguson, to set the public hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay, we are now in public, in a public hearing portion of our meeting. Anybody from the public who wishes to address the council, may do so now. Seeing none, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by Paternas, to close the public meeting. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Public hearing, you got it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Alright, we are, we're back into the uh regular meeting, thank you Pam for catching that. Um, anyway, so uh discussion item B, uh ordinance five. So back uh previous to this, we've been doing all our business in a way that has the city administrator attest to our um ordinances. Um, and that's actually atypical to what what we find as uh best practices out there in the state, so we are making an adjustment and we are having our city clerk attest to these ordinances, that's basically the major change there, am I missing anything?
No.
Okay. If that sounds good with everybody, we'll move down to item C, the Emergency Management Coordinator Agreement. So um last Thursday, we were given the draft agenda that had uh a employment offer for an emergency coordinator position and it has been uh raised as a concern, so we're bringing it up into the into a discussion item. So uh we'll just open that up for discussion right now.
Okay, so my concern about this is that we went from having an eight hundred dollar uh stipend for this to a six thousand dollar stipend on this. And to that effect, the same, or at the same time, from what I know, we don't have any real qualifications or anything that are supposed to go with this job. So I'm wondering what we're paying for and why we're paying significantly more than we ever have in the past.
Sure, I can help you answer that. So, back in the day, we had a s- a situation where um this position was was for protesting a lot of the uh emergency response systems in town, like the siren, uh helped organize things for for winter rescue operations. It was a very light situation. Um, we've had a couple natural disasters come by in the last ten thou- ten ten years, uh last year specifically, where um an effective emergency coordinator fulfilling these uh duties and responsibilities would have been able to uh capture upwards of a hundred thousand dollars of reimbursements from FEMA. So that is what the difference in the job description and and also the uh and also the pay structure. So had had this person been in place last year, they would have potentially paid for themselves for the next decade.
I understand that, I mean.
You do?
Also, also there's the fact that the person that used to do it before was um a city worker already. So they were already on.
Moonlighting.
You know, so they were already doing this stuff, so technically, if you were to add the hours up, they got more than six thousand dollars. Um, do you understand what I'm saying, like?
I understand what you're saying, I don't know that I agree with it. And I think that you have almost no way to prove that without pulling a lot of payroll records. Sounds like you're making some assumptions there.
Sure.
So what do you think?
You're saying that.
What would you say an appropriate compensation package for this position?
I don't know, it just doesn't.
I'm just saying they they were on the clock, being paid through the city, doing emergency management stuff.
Uh, we previously previously said that they didn't do much, hence the fact it was only eight hundred dollars. And now you're you're saying that the work that they did for those years and years is worth six thousand to the.
No. What I'm saying is.
Agreement, it would be uh thirty-five dollars an hour on top of that stipend if they're actively out doing stuff in an emergency.
Which is fully covered by FEMA, if they get activated.
Okay, I I won't get into my.
And also the thing is that we want somebody that's able to do that and try to get the money from FEMA.
Okay, what other what other job or position do we have in the city that does not have any type of requirements that go with it or qualifications like this? Because there's noth- this looks like half of a job description.
But you, what are you gonna put requirements so that six thousand isn't enough?
The job description was passed by this council as a resolution for this position.
That would have been the appropriate time to.
August seventh, twenty twenty-three, it was resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventy-two. So that is where the duties for the position were lifted from, was from a resolution that this council passed at the beginning of August.
Well, I sort of seem to have missed something there.
Um, I wasn't here, that was all in our notes.
Oh, I'll take full credit for that. Apparently I didn't read something close enough. I, I am just I'm skeptical that we will be getting I am skeptical that we will be getting six thousand dollars of value out of this any way you look at it, from what we have, from what I have heard from other staff here and from what I have, what we've talked about at these meetings, I understand what happens in an emergency situation like this as far as the documenting and stuff goes. But man, this seems like a lot for not asking for anything.
But you are asking for some, you're asking them to assist our chiefs and do the paperwork behind what they need done.
How how would uh, how would you best, how would you best categorize and and um organize all the data in a disaster response without somebody like this?
I agree that someone is needed. I'm just saying that this suddenly, again, went up from eight hundred dollars to six thousand dollars.
How many applicants did we get when we posted it for eight hundred dollars?
A lot, I think we turned it down because they all said that they wanted, not a lot, we got a few. And I think that one of them turned it down because the pay wasn't enough at one point, and from my understanding, this was posted internally and not externally after that fact.
What would you be willing to do for six hundred dollars a year?
So this is about two dollars and eighty-eight cents an hour.
An hour?
It's, so if you make six thousand dollars per year, your hourly salary would be two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Uh, you're then making the assumption that this person works two thousand and eighty hours a year. And if we're gonna start calling the entire of their working day as being on call, I think that's a reach.
We gotta also recognize that the job description changed considerably from when it was an eight hundred dollar a year stipend.
Where did the six thousand dollar figure come from?
It was uh, that that's that's the big regret here, is that uh that wasn't presented to the council as part of the job description.
Was this reviewed by a person that normally does job reviews?
We don't have that person anymore.
Why not?
That was an outside source that we used to hire, I don't think we hire them anymore.
Oh, you're talking about DDA?
Yeah.
No, this wasn't reviewed by DDA.
Why don't we have somebody take a look at it and give us a recommendation on what it should be?
Yeah, gave somebody six thousand dollars?
Right, you're gonna pay them six thousand dollars and tell you this is worth five thousand?
Okay, fine, let's let's back that up a bit then.
Did the employment or did the job committee or employment committee review the all this stuff and approve it in an actual meeting? Per our hiring policy?
Did this follow everything?
For the personnel committee, uh the, this came in in August, so I think I'm coming in in the middle of this position description.
So.
We didn't, we didn't have a regular.
We can, I mean, we can take it back.
So it was August seventh, this was approved?
Yes, they want us to. Is that, what what's, what are you requiring to make you feel comfortable with this?
A couple people said, hey, this is, looks good, let's do it, we only have one person internally, so let's just give them
We did, we did have a competitive uh internal pool, it was not limited to a single level.
I'm not worried about, you know, I'm I'm fine with whoever if it's, if they're vetted and all that good stuff, but the, yeah.
The process was a little jacked. This, it leaves a lot lacking in my opinion, and.
We'll uh, we'll invite you in for the for the meeting to hammer it out.
Um, and to that extent, do we know what other cities have done?
This is a recommendation from the Renville County Emergency Coordinator, so this is something that's going on in the county.
The description was or the level of pay was?
The description was and he found the level of pay to be appropriate.
Okay.
I mean, as I understand it, so there's not a motion on the table right now to do anything, so you can motion to approve the agreement, you can motion to table it for further review, um it it's up to you all what you would like to motion, the motion to be.
And I do understand that the process here, that's, it was, it was poor process and I take full responsibility for that. Um, and I'm willing to bring in whoever wants to contribute their expertise in into how we develop this this position uh to come up with a with a better, better offer, I guess. So.
Understanding we may have to go back to the candidates if something changes to see if they would still want to do the agreement. Um, and if not, then we would need to do the full process again.
I just wanted to be clear that I'm not against the position, I'm not against whoever we decide to go with.
This is.
I I didn't like how this was just.
No, it was, it was poor process, I totally agree.
I think we need to stick to a standard and we need to stay to it, so.
Well, and again, this is as much my hour, however you want to say it, because yeah, we passed this exact document.
Yes, we did.
I I checked word for word this this afternoon.
And I guess I didn't, my understanding is this was a list of duties and I didn't every job description I've ever seen has the requirements, has the language of, hey, you need to be able to stand or whatever, lift more than ten pounds and all that stuff. I assume that would be appended on.
We can add that.
Plus whatever job, plus whatever actual qualifications would go with the job that we'd like to see. And I think for someone getting paid six thousand dollars with, for very, very part-time work, I think that it is well within reason to say that we should expect some sorts of qualifications for this. Or at a minimum guarantees that they will get those qualifications or take, if it's not qualifications, at least take classes and have a basic understanding of what they're going to need to do. Um.
Is there a way to understand how many hours in a typical year this?
Not because you don't know how many storms there's gonna be.
But if there's no storms, does it take?
Then it'll be no hours.
No, there better not be no hours.
No, it'll be. There's gonna be storms.
There's gotta be ma- no hours. We're talking about like the maintenance of stuff and the training and all that kind of.
So the maintenance, the trainings, the updating of emergency plans, the attending different scenarios, so like the hospital has emergency scenarios that the city is representing on to say, how would the city react to this scenario?
But they're not.
Nursing home, stuff like that.
They're doing that, but they're not taking the reins, we're following the county guy.
Correct.
He's just assist, this is an assistant to the chiefs, an assistant to the county emergency. He's, they're, they are gonna be.
They're the support role.
Right. They're they're not gonna actually be out there standing in the command center telling everyone what to do, they're.
But they still need training and need to attend training, so.
And so do you want to take it back and figure out what kind of training they would need, I mean, right now?
From what I hearing, all we need to do is 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 uh go through the Personnel Committee process, add in Landon's or, you know, recommendations for for a job description and uh then bring it before the council again, is that correct?
I I mean, I would like it to look like it, I would look, again, as we've kind of stated, I'd like it to follow the process we do for every single.
For sure, and I I totally regret that we did not.
Are we requiring it to be posted again, to interview candidates again? Like, how how far back are we uh are we going for the process? Or if we change it, can we present the terms to the current candidate that has been selected through an interview panel?
That's what I.
And then see if they are comfortable with this before going back to the drawing board?
I think that if there are no substantial changes to the duties, and I'm gonna say requirements that this person and this person meets whatever requi- requirements um we set, there would be no problem with going to that, but we'd better we'd better at least have it so we both understand what we're getting out of this situation or out of this, I don't even know. Would it be considered an employment agreement or a contract service, because that's not even exactly clear in here? Because, well, whatever.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, um, so right now, this is a proposed agreement um that that is at will and subject to the council approval. And so um, so, you know, I I don't have a lot of concerns with this conversation at the moment, however, if council um rewrote through the process and then had the same type of agreement that they were interested in, was the same duties and didn't then offer it to the same person, I would have some concerns um based on some of those um potential reliance issues that this person would have, so I think we need to think about that and to council, one of the council members' points, the agreement itself, if it's going back to the Personnel Committee, it'd really use some fine tuning with respect to better defining the relationship and whether it's an employment relationship, whether it's an independent contractor relationship and that that kind of uh language could be added to the contract itself.
I uh had trouble hearing what you were saying about the, how it, how it uh applies to the the applicant. You said we.
Oh, well, right now, the applicant, I would imagine, and maybe Elizabeth knows a little bit more, um, that the applicant understood that this was subject to council approval.
Oh, yeah.
Correct, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, you know, that's not what's happening, so there's not an expectation at this point or a reliance of that job offer because it's subject to council approval. Um, however, if council went back to the Employment or the Personnel Committee and came up with the same criteria, the same the same contract, the same everything, and then offered it to somebody different, then we would probably be having a different discussion right now because there might be some other additional issues to think about with respect to that. Um, if this does go back to a Personnel Committee and the Personnel Committee would like us to take a look at it from, because we weren't asked to review this contract. Um, so there, it is not uncommon in many of our contracts, when we're asked to draft them, to put provisions in them with respect to the relationship piece um as far as uh independent contractor, um status as opposed to employee status, you know, um those types of things to consider, if it's an employee status, we might want to make sure that there's nothing else to think about uh with respect to any types of benefits or um you know, FMLA or any of those types of things, you know, that might apply, so. So just some things for the council to consider in their conversation.
So.
We need to take it back and clean it up.
I was gonna say again, I I, I'm guessing that there's not gonna be anything too groundbreaking in what's put into this, but it's.
Change is a change, is that right, Pamela, or are we accepting certain changes but not other changes?
I think I heard you ask the question about whether there should be any changes to the contract.
No, I said any change in the contract is a change in the contract, there's no like, if this contract isn't what comes back, then there was a change to the contract, correct?
Right, we're assuming it, though we're expecting.
Yes.
We're expecting it to be, what he's saying is if we keep it substantially the same and offer it to somebody else, not the person we've already talked to, there could be issues. But I wouldn't, I don't know that I would expect for that to happen, I would expect for us to have.
Just a cleaner, yeah.
Presentable document, we'll call it, and then present it as such and figure out if it's an employment agreement or an independent contractor, contract type situation.
Do you want to be a part of that discussion?
I am.
Because we can have it right now.
I'll start the top line. We'll do it.
Well, then, also your primary objection to start with was the moving from eight hundred dollars.
And right, that is my prime, that is a primary objective too, because I don't know that that is reasonable or responsible of us a- as a use of taxpayer money.
It'd be nice to have some definition of what the value is the city gets.
We could get an estimate off of how much FEMA money we didn't recover last year, would that help you make your decision?
Has nothing to do with anything.
So we, do you want us to hire?
We don't want it to be a goose egg again, I can tell you that.
Uh.
Nobody here knows how to do that.
We are part of the League of Minnesota Cities, we, I am sure that we can somehow call up lots of city halls of comparable cities and figure out what they spend for their emergency management person and figure out if we are in an appropriate bracket compared to all of those towns and cities around us. There are plenty of towns and cities around us that probably have somewhere between two thousand and three thousand or two thousand and five thousand people. Whatever you want to call comparable.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's out of the, that would be an over-the-top ask to get that information to see if we're in the right ballpark even.
Sure.
I'd be interested to know, and on average, how many hours a week of effort does it take to do this person?
And to John's point, it's not gonna be full effort all the time, but there's gonna be, we're gonna call it some background maintenance of this stuff.
Yeah, that's, I'm primarily interested in what, what like the low level stuff is that has to happen every year. And then we might figure there's two emergencies a year that respond to that take a certain amount of time.
The, the two emergencies per year, to the mayor's point, that could pay for itself.
Right.
Ridiculously quickly.
Are you all okay if the chief sways in just really quick?
Always.
Yeah.
I'm over, um, I put in probably 12 hours a week on average. Besides everything else that we do as far as trainings and emergency calls. So I'd say 10 to 12, say 12 average. Stopping down here at the ski office, doing things, you know, sending emails. And I get $2,400 a year besides. So I somewhat agree with the councilman patterns that I was a little shocked that it was $6,000, um, when the job was posted. But, um, I don't know what the qualifications were, or not qualifications, what, what you're actually expecting. I mean, the previous person that did it, um, would, you know, go out and do, you know, get cots and things up to the armory during a blizzard. Didn't assist us in any way of during hazards or during incidents, which it, that isn't their job. Their job is to go around after a storm, collect all the data and get it presented to the reimbursement. And then if you get to a certain threshold, you get money back. Month to month, I think it's their job to, to test all the sirens, the first Wednesday with a monk. That's what the old person did. But, um, in comparison to what I feel the fire chief does, the emergency management directors, workload would be much less throughout the year.
Sure.
But, um, if they're doing the, the pre-incident planning and the pre, the plan of the whole city, uh, what do we call it? The, the planning of your emergency coordination.
Yeah, the, uh, what's it called?
Oh, pre-planned procedures? That could be fairly extensive to keep up with that. I don't know.
Yeah, it's a.
Pre-incident plan.
The document that the chief has at 95% right now. What was I called? The emergency response plan, right?
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, uh. That's definitely worth consideration. All right, we'll, uh, we'll take it back and.
I would ask that the council request, um, Madhead.
Mike Hannon?
Mike Hannon, create the council on what the expectations of a low-level emergency coordinator would be for a city this size.
Sure.
Uh, he assisted me with the entire process, um, so the meat and potatoes are in that document of what's expected of him. But the reality of what's actually gonna take place and how long it's gonna take them and what an average storm or something is going to take their time. Um, the, uh, evacuation drills that they're gonna set up in the hospital or the nursing homes. He will have that information, um, to share with you to give you more of a, this is what it's gonna take for time and energy. Um, to be a little more accurate, I think, with what your expectation should be. He in no way is trying to take over, but he's willing to help us with it. And he's, he's been in this business assisting every town in this county for years. He'd be your resource if you want some answers.
Yeah, he's usually very good about, uh, helping us understand his world too, so.
We always know this feature at this one because the former person that did it abused the system. So we don't know if, it's been, it was thrown on Chief Davenport and Chief Megan before that and we, and it was absolutely nothing really done. So now we're.
At least we have a plan now.
We're free.
Right, and you also have to take into consideration that he, this person, they are, if we do employee versus contracted person, they also don't get the retirement like other people would.
Right, so that's not spelled out in here.
Right, but that's, I'm just saying a consideration that if this person is contracted in to do it, they're not getting the retirement money that other people want. So maybe doing it an employee with retirement benefits might be the way to go then.
We might not just get to decide that depending on the duties and requirements and stuff. There are statutory things of whether you are an employee or an independent contractor. We just don't get to make that up.
Right, but we're just, what I'm just saying is that those are differences that we need to keep in mind as well. Is that not, it's not apples to apples when looking at it.
I agree.
All right, we'll clean it up. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. We definitely need to make sure that our procedures are solid and, and even though it's painful, appreciate it. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, let's, you gotta call, you gotta call balls and strikes in this position too, right?
Are you gonna hear from Mike Hannon then?
Not instantly.
No, yeah, but are we gonna try to invite him to a meeting?
He's gonna come.
Uh, is he gonna, I thought, is he gonna, yeah, is he gonna refer to the personnel committee or is he here for a full council meeting?
Everybody wants to be involved then. I thought you said to send it back to the personnel.
For a reason. I think that's where it should go.
I mean, I'm, I'm more than happy to throw my two cents at the personnel committee, even though that would create, we'll call it quorum problems, but whatever.
Right. We have like extensively met with Mr. Hannon extensively to come up with this.
And I don't, I don't know that my input will be valuable besides for, I don't know, what are the minimum qualifications and what are we requiring this person to do?
He was on the interview panel for one thing.
Right, I, so.
I mean, we don't need him to talk, and I just.
Again, the, the point isn't that, the point is that we have an incomplete document and there's the question of cost. Not, and it's not that we need an emergency manager to come tell the entire council, this is exactly what you need. It's that the HR side of this has been taken care of.
Sure, got it. We'll clean it up. All right. Justin, you're back. I'm so glad to see you.
Hi, Justin.
Although Kendra has been doing a really good job. Our city's been served very well by SEH through this project. I do have some positive feedback. Uh, I, I guess I can't remember what it was, word for word, but I haven't gotten any negative feedback about you guys, which is strange.
It's great to be seen. Um, it's good to be back. Just by way of introduction for those watching on TV, uh, Justin Black, uh, city engineer. And Kendra's passing out a couple of things that, uh, we'll get to as part of my PowerPoint presentation.
That's a big piece of paper.
That's okay. Reacting there.
The two things that Kendra passed out are the assessment rule, which lists all of the property owners, the physical address, and then the total amount assessed. And then the other document is an assessment map, and we've been doing the assessment map for, um, a half a dozen years for our projects. And it provides more of a visual view of where the properties are situated on the, on the project. Oftentimes, if you're just rolling down the list, unless you're familiar with the property, the owner, it, it doesn't carry a lot of weight. So the maps really show where it's at on the project. The, uh, there's also a large printout over here on the table. Uh, I guess what Kendra handed out is what we term the assessment role summary. The actual assessment rule has a larger spreadsheet, has more columns and rows that, uh, shows all of the different calculations, if you will. So with that being said, I've got a short, uh, PowerPoint that I'd like to share with the city council tonight. And just first thing I'd like to clarify is, is tonight is not the assessment hearing. Uh, that's what's labeled on the, uh, the title screen slide here. But I, I will say that the night of the assessment hearing, I'll give a very similar presentation to those in attendance, uh, just to provide some back on, on assessments. So in the 10 slides that I'm gonna share with you tonight, we'll talk about the purpose of the assessment hearing. Uh, I'll give you an update on the project status. We'll talk about project costs and funding, where the project's coming in at, and review some of those funding parameters that, uh, were established when we initiated the project. And then the last part will be, uh, discussion of how the assessments are applied and some of the details, uh, related to that. And then there is an action item for tonight. It's a resolution that will be calling for the hearing, uh, on the assessments and declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessments, which we've really done already. That's the documents in front of you. So with no further delay, I'd like to just talk a little bit about the purpose of the assessment hearing. Why do we hold the assessment hearing? It's part of the statutory requirement for public improvements. Uh, and it provides an opportunity for, uh, people on the project to, uh, give testimony regarding their assessments. They can comment on the assessment. So the assessment hearing is focused on just the assessment portion of the project. Uh, and like I said earlier, there is a resolution in the council packet that will call for the assessment hearing on October 30th, 2023. So project stra, status, uh, there's still construction work going on out on the project. Uh, the, on the far east end of the project, there's some concrete flat work and paving that's scheduled for, uh, next week. Flat work is driveways and sidewalks. Uh, we're expecting that to happen next week. And then there'll be some turf restoration or seeding in that area of the project this fall yet. And then next year, the contractor will come back and put on that last layer of batuminous pavement. So if you go out on even the portion of the project that were completed earlier, you'll notice that the pavement's a little bit lower than the curb. Next year, they'll come and put that last layer of blacktop on and finish the paving. The reason we wait for one construction season is, uh, studies have shown that about 90% of the major settlements occur within that first year. So we put a lot of pipes into the ground, uh, that first freeze thaw, we, we expect if there are any settlements, uh, we'll see them then. And then we can put that last layer of pavement on to get us a nice finished product. So there's some, some work ahead of us on the project. That in mind, we took a look at what's the projected finished project cost. When we opened bids on this in May of 2022, the, the bid amount was about 8.3 million. Right now, we're projecting final construction cost after everything is completed next summer, uh, to be about 8.32. So we're just a hair under, um, what the, uh, the bid amount was. So we're, we're right on target. Maybe mention one other thing, uh, in addition to this. As part of the funding package that was put together when we opened bids with USDA and the city obligation bond, uh, one of the things that, uh, as part of that funding package, a 5% contingency is included on the construction. So 5% of 8.3 million is just over $400,000. So that was built into the funding package. We haven't used any of that $400,000. So when we come time to do the final loans next year, uh, right now, we're working on interim loans. Um, we can lower those loan amounts by 400,000, which is great news. Uh, the other side of the cost equation, we've got the hard costs, actually building the project. Uh, then there's the project-related costs, which are all of the other things, the engineering, the surveying, administrative, legal. Uh, we had material testing, Braun InterTech was on site, uh, during the project, doing material testing. We had estimated that to be about 1.6 million. That's what we plugged into the funding scenario. Uh, we're looking at that coming in, again, under budget, about 1.48 million. Uh, part of that is just how well the project moved, the, uh, the progress of the project, if you will. Uh, we had a lot of concerns last spring. I think I even mentioned it to council about, are we gonna get done before Thanksgiving? Uh, we had three rain days this summer, uh, so the weather played a, a big role in that. And here we are, um, middle of October wrapping things up. So the timeline of the, the project was compressed and, um, when our people are out there, they're out there on an hourly basis. So if we're not out there that full amount of time, it's a cost savings that's passed on to the city of Olivia. So again, from that perspective, we're coming in under budget, which is great news. So total project cost, where are we at? Uh, about 9.8 million is the total project cost when you add those two together. So, uh, just at a high level, funding, uh, USDA rural development, uh, the city secured water and storm sewer loans of about 4.3 million and a wastewater loan of about $3 million. Now you'll notice for USDA rural development funding, they don't have any street funding. So rural development does not fund streets. Now they do provide a, a portion of the street funding for the street that's directly above the utility. So they do provide some funding, but they do not provide funding for streets as, uh, in general. So that's where the general obligation bond comes in. Uh, so that bond that the city, uh, has already secured is about 2.6 million. So that's the funding. If you add those numbers up, it, it comes up to about 9.8 million. So that's how the project was funded. All of those are loans. So the city has to pay back those loans. And the sources for those loans or bond payments are general tax levy, your utility funds, sanitary sewer water, and special assessments. So special assessments is a mechanism to repay the loans. In this case, in talking with Jason Murray, our financial advisor, those special assessment dollars are targeting the general obligation bond. So that's the piece that's, that it's going to pay back. Now, he said there's going to be additional monies available, uh, and they'll direct those to the USDA rural development loans to help buy down some of that cost too.
Where's that additional money come from?
Uh, just because the, we're assessing about $2 million and the general obligation bond is only, uh, 2.6 million. So there'll be, and, and some of that general obligation bond is paid by utility funds. So, um, there'll be enough money to cover not only that bond payment, but some additional funding. Just because the amount that is being assessed, over $2 million, is being assessed to cover the $2.6 million general obligation. But good question. So special assessments. So this is where we talk a little bit about what are they, um, how are they administered? Special assessments are outlined in state statute, uh, chapter 429, and that gives the city's authority to levy special assessments. And generally speaking, it's a charge imposed on properties for a particular improvement that benefits a property. So it's based on a particular improvement. And I'll share with you in just a minute, uh, following the city's assessment policy, like most cities, each of the improvements are broken out on an individual cost basis. And I'll talk a little bit more about why that is, uh, broke out that way. So many cities across the state levy special assessments for street and utility improvement projects. Special assessments are commonplace. Uh, there's not many cities that don't use special assessments. Uh, so when you see a, a project happening in a city, uh, oftentimes there's special assessments tied to that project. Most people just don't realize it because they've never been assessed before. So for a lot of people, this is something new, uh, and that's why we want to share this information the night of the assessment hearing. So here's the special assessment rates. Uh, on the far left-hand side, you'll see the improvement. So just like the statute had mentioned, it's based on a specific improvement. So we have water main, that's the largest pipe that goes down the middle of the street. Uh, the water service line is a small pipe that goes from the middle of the street to each individual home. Uh, the sanitary sewer main, again, that's the main line going down the middle of the street. And the sanitary sewer service line, that's the line going from the main to the home. You'll notice for the service lines, they're assessed on a per unit. So if a house has one water service and one sewer service, it's a per-unit charge. All of the other assessments, uh, in, in that category are per LF. LF stands for linear foot. So it's really dependent on how big your lot is. If you have a 50-foot lot or a 66-foot lot, it's, for water main, it's $31 per foot. And I've got a, a sample that I'll share with you in a, in a minute. For, um, concrete driveways, SF is square feet. Uh, same with batuminous driveways and sidewalk, SF is square feet. So it's based on the area. Uh, for street, there's a residential and a commercial, uh, assessment rate, and then there's a downtown commercial. Those streets were wider in the downtown area, so they were assessed at a higher rate. The final assessment rates, you can see on the right-hand side, the far right-hand column, for the utilities, they're staying the same as the estimated rates. And you can see for this reconstructed street, curb and gutter, uh, they're slightly lower than what was estimated. Uh, and those estimated rates were presented at a public hearing. Uh, let me get my date here. It was in December of 2020, December 7th, 2020. So this was public information. We shared these rates at the public hearing, and we also had some assessment maps similar to that at some of the neighborhood meetings to share this with residents, um, so that they had at least an idea of what these assessment amounts were, um, back in 2020. So here's an example assessment. So this would be for a 75-foot wide lot. If you look through the, uh, assessment role or the assessment map, the assessments, um, vary, uh, because all of the lots are, for the most part, different widths. But for a 75-foot wide lot, uh, we have an assessment for the reconstructed street. But for a 75-foot wide lot, we have an assessment for the reconstructed street, so that would be 75 feet times that rate that I shared with you previously, $122 per foot. Same for the sanitary sewer main, 75 feet, water main, 75 feet. And then this particular example, there's a sewer and water service. So those are the improvements that happened in front of that particular property. In this particular example, you'll see that there is no sidewalk assessment. That's because in this example, there was no sidewalk in front of that home. Another situation that occurs on corner lots is sometimes the sewer and water services are fed from the side street. So the project didn't replace their sewer and water service, sewer and water service, so in that example, there would be no assessment for those. So they really vary depending on what improvements were made adjacent to the property. So this is just an example. Each property is different. So the assessment rule, I shared a little bit with you what that consists of. That's that document in front of you. It includes each property on the project, there's over 100 of them. It identifies each improvement, and it provides a total amount assessed to each property, which is included in the mailed notice. So as part of the process, a notice will be mailed. It looks like this. So this is what will be mailed to each individual property, and as part of the notice, you can see, we've listed all of the categories along with what categories, if you will, apply to that specific property, and then there's a total amount assessed specific to that property. So up till now, we've been talking a lot about estimates. When it comes to actually the assessment hearing and mailing the notice, it'll be the actual amount specific to the property. And then there's other information in the, it's a two-page notice, there's other information in there about the process, if you will, and I'll get into that a little bit with the next slide. So if we total all the assessments up, about 2.1 million is the total amount assessed on this project. And again, the total cost was about 9.8. So again, the map shows the assessment values for each process, property in the quarter. So payments, so how are these administered? Is it a lump sum payment? No, it's not. The assessments are payable interest-free until November 29th, 2023. So they have 30 days if they want to pay them without interest being added. They can do that in that first 30 days after the hearing. Unpaid assessments will be certified to the county and are payable with property taxes over the next 20 years at a 5% annual interest rate. So each year on their property tax statement that they get every spring and fall, there'll be a line item that's a special assessment, and it'll be the balance of what's remaining. The 5% annual interest, that rate was calculated based on the interest that the city borrowed money for on your general, excuse me, general obligation bond. That interest rate was 3.42%. I discussed that with Jason Murray, and in reviewing that with Jason Murray, he said typically the city has added about a percent and a half to that rate, and that is the interest rate applied to the assessments. So that's, and that's typically what's done. I've seen that in other communities, they add a percent and a half for some of the administrative costs for the city to administer the loan. So that's how we arrived at the 5% annual interest rate over 20 years. Payments will begin in 2024 and appear on the tax statement. So we'll certify it this fall. You'll see those first assessments showing up on the 2024 tax statements. After January 1st, the assessments may be paid in full at any time with the county auditor. So if you don't prepay your assessment, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to live with the full 20-year term. At any point during that 20 years, you can go into the county auditor's office and pay the balance. So we get that question. Another question we get is, what happens if I sell my home? That is not uncommon, again, and usually the assessment balance is negotiated as part of that selling process. So questions? I know that was a lot of information in about 10 minutes, but I'd be happy to go back to any of the slides.
You said that you can repay the loan before November 29th, interest-free?
Yes.
But then at any time, you can go in and pay the balance that's left?
Yes.
And is that also interest-free? Do you have to pay interest on top of that?
Good question. So if you go in and pay, let's say you pay in year five, you would have to pay for that year's interest. So if you pay in July, you don't pay a half a year's interest, you'd pay a full year's interest, but you wouldn't pay for the other 15 years.
Sure.
So you would save that interest money. So again, the action for tonight is a resolution calling for that assessment hearing, and we propose to hold that in this room on October 30th. And I know it's a special meeting for you, but that'd be the time to have it.
Call for a motion to have a special assessment hearing on October 30th at 5:30 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Blanca, I'm sorry, Ferguson, seconded by Paternas, to have a special assessment hearing on October 30th at 5:30 PM. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. It's good to see you, man.
Yeah, it's good to be black, good to be back.
I'm going to be flustered, I put my agenda away here.
Put it out.
All right. Okay, we are down to the reports section of our meeting here. Any reports from council?
There's a pool report.
Yep, there's a pool report that came in this morning. Bear with me for a second.
They're opening soon.
Yeah? I heard rumors of that.
All that land.
From our pool coordinator, the electrical is in the process for the pool. They have an item that is not tipped till next week, so it'll be there in the middle of October, and it'll be then before they get it done. They don't know the exact date yet. Railing on the crow's nest has been put back on and secured. They're hoping to open by early November. That'd be awesome. She's trying to schedule a lifeguard class for mid-November to increase their current staff. She has some tentative date planned, but kind of hard to do that without a pool that's open yet. The adjuster and her are talking, and hopefully we'll see some stuff soon out of it. That's kind of the huge question mark of all this stuff is...
What's insurance going to cover?
What's the cost?
It's going to get covered. I like, I like John's...
Well, we get a deductible at minimum, but, yeah, and apparently they're reaching out to an accounting firm to figure out payroll and some other costs and stuff like that because there's a revenue loss portion of...
Insurance.
...policy.
Oh, good.
Would be great to get, maybe we can use that to entice some high school kids to come work there. I guess that's one of her big worries, is employees.
Nobody to handle the ton, too.
They have a pool and no one to work at it.
Oh, yeah.
So hopefully we can mitigate that.
Do you know what that deductible is?
Nope. Policy's handled by the school. And I don't think I've ever asked Mr. Manton that. On the bright side, I only have to pay for half of it.
Silver lining.
That's right.
Well, when you put it that way.
Yeah, I'm not always gloomy doom.
POC?
Yeah, so we met last Wednesday, and we have a subcommittee that is reviewing the small wireless portion of the policy that the city has. We're meeting again this Wednesday to continue to talk about it. I mean, it's taking fair amount of effort, fair amount of thought to try to do this equitably, not, not treat anybody different, and still preserve all the things we want to preserve. So it's a work in progress, but progress is being made.
Thank you. Were there any other committees? Couple staff and Landon and I, Elizabeth and Susie, went to the chamber, annual chamber event. That was a really nice, nice way to, to talk with all the, all the businesses in town that are members of the chamber. Mary Jo was awarded a lifetime service award, so that was kind of neat. But yeah, the chamber has a new director, Mackenzie Gartner. She started two weeks ago, just really optimistic about her energy, her, she's, she's very sharp, she's going to do great things for the chamber. I don't have any other committee meetings or committee news that I can think of. We do have an employment opportunity open in the public works. This is kind of the general public works labor position, so I want to invite anybody out there listening, if they find interest in the public works position, go ahead and go through the interview process. If you have any questions on what that is, call City Hall.
Application's due by October 13th.
Any other reports or business? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. You're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.